Agenda passes. That takes us into presentations. Dr. Nichols, are we having presentations this evening?
Not tonight, Mr. President, but we have you lined up for you next.
Excellent, excellent. Well, all right, well, we'll close presentations and we'll move to public comments. This is the time in the board meeting when you can come forward and address the board. If you have signed up beforehand with Ms. King. Ms. King, do we have any public comments? Thank you, Ms. King. If there, since there are no public comments, we will close public comments. And we'll move directly into business action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the consent agenda items contained in minutes A twenty-three dash twenty-three of the document. D, field trip question Madison City School. D, facility rental agreement. And D, an agreement by and between the City Board of Education, Marilla, and software that provides critical research-based lessons with virtual reality. Offering lessons for our students to be used in Liberty Middle, our CD students. And the software here, free as described, and we agree.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda items A through D. A through D. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overcash. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Consent agenda passes.
Mr. President, I recommend for approval the amended policy five point nine point four dash sick leave and policy seven point one seven, extended learning opportunity.
Board, the superintendent, sorry, let's open them all up. The superintendent recommends approval of policy five nine four and policy seven one seven. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Ms. Lesman. Open it up for discussion.
These are the policies we did a first reading on last board meeting. I haven't received any comments from the public or anything like that. The sick leave one, like we discussed last time, adds fostering and adopted children to the reasons you can use sick leave. And then the ELO, extended learning opportunity, brings us in compliance with a statute mandating that we have ELO opportunities as policy.
Any other discussion? And so we received no feedback on these. They were publicly facing since the last board meeting, and this is the second reading. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Gray to come and present to the board the financial and bank reconciliation statements for Madison City School.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Good evening, board. In our finance committee meeting this afternoon, we discussed September financials, which is the end of the fiscal year for us. So just to go over a few things, in our general fund, revenue was up sixteen percent. Expenditures were up fifteen percent, so that left us a good positive fund balance in general fund. We ended with forty-six operating days, which is slightly above what the board requires of the forty-five. In the total overall fund balance for Madison City Schools, we ended with a fund balance of two hundred and three million. A large portion of that was not expended due to some capital projects being a little bit slower to start, but overall Madison City ended the year to the green.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the September twenty twenty-three financial and bank reconciliation statements as presented to you by Ms. Gray.
Board, the superintendent, I'm sorry. Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the September twenty twenty-three financial and bank reconciliation statements. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. Discussion board. Like to say that we had a financial committee meeting before this, and we went over the month totals and the year-end results. And just want to say a big thanks to Ms. Williams and Ms. Gray and Mr. Haynes and their entire staff for the wonderful budgeting job they've done this year. As she pointed out, revenues have been up, but our costs have been up, but our revenues outpaced our costs just barely. And, you know, every, everything this district does runs through the finance department, and we have one of the best finance departments, if not the best in the state, and I'm very grateful for that. Board, do you have anything, Dan?
I would just like to thank our coordinators, our principals, our staff throughout the district. You know, our staff and the finance department do a great job, as you claim, but it also takes those folks at the school level who help. We have such a great budgeting process, and Ms. Gray and Ms. Williams bring in all of these coordinators and principals and staff to look at their budgets. And, you know, one of the things I know, Mr. Trelkamp, you remember this, when we were getting our bond and blessed that our rating went up, one of the things they were impressed about the most was the just monthly budgeting and daily keeping up with the budget and expenditures that goes on in the school district. And I remember that they were very impressed with that and what our staff does. And that, that's a two-way street, and I just want to say thank you to Ms. Gray, Ms. Williams, and our finance staff, but also all of our team that worked to do that.
Absolutely.
I'll just, I know it's a ton of work to close out a year, and it's, so just, I'm echoing the thanks, so.
Anything else? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gray. Dr. Nichols, that ends business actions, I believe?
Yes, sir.
It moves us to personnel.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the list of substitutes from Madison City School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the list of substitutes from Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group? Group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? But none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval an employment contract by and between the City Board of Madison and Mr. Clay McCall. Mr. McCall will serve as athletic administrator for the twenty twenty-two, for the remainder of this year, and his contract is under provisions of the Student First Act.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an employment contract by and between the City of Madison Board of Education and Mr. Clay McCall. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overcash. Any discussion on this, Dr. Nichols?
No, sir. Mr. Terrell, any discussion on this contract? The board is aware already, we have a fully assigned athletic administrator now. The supplement that they're under the base is a teacher contract, and then the work they perform that's extra follows a supplement, such as our head football coaches do. And so that's a little different contractually than we've ever had before, and Mr. Terrell has worked that out, Mr. Sanderson on those contracts.
Anything else, board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the supplemental contracts for work performed by Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group? The group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. Discussion?
Mr. President, members of the board, a little fast, I'm sorry. Most of these are after-school tutoring programs that we have. Dr. Donaldson, would you like to say any words about that?
This is just a continuation of the same tutoring program we've been offering for the last couple of years. We have to give funds, provide extra funds to our instruction classes. But it is.
And we.
It will be.
And mainly, Dr. Donaldson, that we focus students that are in tier three intervention students that through iReady assessments are below benchmark and work to get those students at a level, prepare for the A-CAP in the spring.
Excellent.
And part of this, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Gray or Dr. Donaldson, is a requirement of the Literacy Act to provide an opportunity to give these students remediation, but not funded by the Literacy Act. So I just, I want to thank the board for the local funding that goes into that, since it is a legislative requirement, but not legislatively funded.
A standard unfunded requirement.
Yes, sir.
Anything further, board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend the remainder of the personnel agenda with extended leaves, transfers, and other areas.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the personnel actions remaining that you have in front of you. Can these be taken as a group? The group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Personnel actions pass. Dr. Nichols, are there any personnel actions that you would like to call attention to this evening?
Yes, sir. Sadly announced, you know, part of the agenda was addressing the passing of one of our bus drivers and stretching from the Transportation Department. Been with us since two thousand and fifteen and was well-loved throughout the district as he served schools. And we certainly keep all of the transportation staff and the kids that rode the bus and the families that knew him and the work that was put in, and we certainly remember all of them and his service. Also want to recognize Joey Wilson, fourth grade teacher at Madison. Will be retiring in January of the new year. Began teaching in nineteen ninety-four in Madison and was nominated and won Teacher of the Year in two fourteen. Both of, both of her girls graduated from the system, and teaching has been a joy, both there and West Madison, and just twenty-five years of dedication and service. We certainly want to thank Joey for that and know that her retirement will be certainly as beneficial. She did say that even with all the new schools being built, she absolutely loved being part of the original. And if you've been to Madison, you'll see that on the wall, so. Also, with your improvement, we are moving Kelsey Thomas, who is with us tonight. Kelsey, if you'll stand up, please. Kelsey is currently a fifth grade teacher at Rainbow Elementary and has been there since two thousand and twenty. I recommended Kelsey, even though her undergraduate degree is from the University of Florida, and her master's is from Florida, and I, and they regularly give Tennessee a good whipping. I gave her that anyway. And, but she has had a long history of work, starting in Florida, moving to Virginia, and then moving here with us in two thousand and twenty, serving as a tutoring program director, an EL camp assistant director, an EL leadership team member, an S2S rocket sponsor, district accreditation team, Blue Ribbon Schools committee member. I'm not sure how you do all that in two thousand and twenty to now, but she, she did it and was overwhelmingly tremendous choice for our map position at Columbia. We felt like the best thing. This position's been open, so I certainly want to thank the admin team at Columbia for going several months here without a map. We lost our map, but we didn't want to upset the classroom setting until we got to the end of the semester, so they're currently interviewing to find a person for that slot. But Kelsey, we certainly are excited about you joining the administrative team. I know your husband's with you tonight. If you'd introduce him, please. Sam? We'll give him credit. Here, how's that? How often do you see a Tennessee? Oh, don't do that, Dr. Single. But certainly, she, she was outstanding candidate when the committee recommended her, and we know she'll be a great addition to the staff at Columbia. So congratulations. Mr. President, that's all the personnel work.
That closes personnel actions, and so that moves us to superintendent comments, which takes us back to you, Dr. Nichols.
Well, I'll be brief, but there's several things I'd like to thank. First of all, we had our announcement yesterday with the Child Advocacy Center, the Madison Police Department, the Madison Fire Department for our Handle With Care program, and I certainly appreciate the great partnership we have. Ms. Denzies here, we have a tremendous partnership with our chief of police and our fire chief, and this partnership will allow our teachers to know if there's been an incident. They won't know the details, but if there's been an incident where a student's life has been kind of altered, a fire, death in a family, anything that our first responders have to deal with, and that the teacher will then, through the advocacy center, get notice to handle this child with care. The child's coming to school that's happened to, has been involved in handling a difficult situation, and they don't get the details, they just know, hey, take a look, look out for this child, especially today. And so I certainly appreciate that partnership that we have. We had a great mental health fair. I want to thank Ms. Allen and all of our social worker staff, our PTA staff, our sponsors, Journey, allowing us to be there at a great night of folks being there from different agencies, offering support. You know, we have a great partnership, not only with our mental health counselors, but also the enrichment center. And, and so just, I appreciate all the work that goes on to help not only the mental health needs of our students, but we also are working with the enrichment center for those staff that have mental health issues or crisis in their life, and that they can reach out and get those services. Had my meeting with our teacher group from the district, Dr. Donaldson and I and Mr. Terrell, and certainly love their feedback on things. You know, some of the things that we've changed in the staffing things of the past, safety. We all have the crisis alert system now because that was a need that came out of their feedback. We, we have our doors now that we can secure and buzz in. We have the Bloom discipline system that now lets us have a better documentation of how disciplined are handled, and also has a support element. So if a teacher feels a need for a counselor to be involved, we now have a way to make sure that doesn't fall in the crack somewhere. And so, you know, the feedback, Dr. Ja has spent a great deal of time this fall meeting with our CMP, meeting with our custodians, and so just getting different feedback from our stakeholders. And so I certainly appreciate that time to meet with our staff and talk about challenges and ways that we can do that. So I'll certainly thank Dr. Donaldson. We have a meeting coming this next few weeks with our student group, and we will take the student survey we had and let them do a SWOT analysis of the school district and allow them to have input on that. So, you know, we meet with our community groups, we meet, I meet monthly with our PTA, we meet with support staff groups, teacher groups, student groups, and try to take this feedback and make, make that part of our conversation at the district level about how we can support our staff. And I certainly appreciate our staff, our coordinators. Not one time since I've been here have I brought information back that anyone balked from that, that anyone said, wait a second. Everybody takes that at heart and wants to work on that. So I appreciate, Dr. Donaldson really helps me to coordinate all of that, and I'm not sure that's in her job description, it's kind of those other duties that's assigned, but she, she does it, and I certainly want to appreciate it. And then we, I know many of you may mention this, but I just want to thank our staff. I thanked our principals this morning for our veterans program. My only, my only problem with them is they all fall on the same day at about the same time, and it's just dad gum challenging.
It is.
To get to them all, and I just think, tell you, I want to. You know, as the son of a career military person who served in World War II in Korea, I can't tell you anything that makes me prouder in our district and in our community than honoring the men and women who have worn and are wearing the uniform of our country and doing that. There's nothing. And, you know, I appreciate our schools doing that and taking that on. That's just one more thing they do, but you can tell our kids love it, and they write notes and they send them. And, you know, the other day, I was at Rainbow. Erica's sitting back over there. I'm gonna call you out. You come to meetings, Erica, and you get called out. She sent me an email and it said, Dr. Nichols, you always want to know things that are going on in the school district. I want you to come out here on such and such a date at such and such a time, because we have folks who come and remind me, Erica, which, where they come from.
Merrill.
Merrill Gardens Retirement Club. And they come to the school and read to our kids. And I'm gonna get them the next time they come, I want y'all to be there. And this little man walked in with his Navy hat on, and these little folks came, and they sat in there, and those kids were mesmerized as they talked to them and read to them. And I just, first of all, thank you for letting me know that. You know, there are so many things like that that go on in our school district every day, and, and I'm just thankful and blessed that our people do that. And I could go on about every school, and I will the next meeting, because I'm sure they'll send me emails and say, Dr. Nichols, we do this, you know? And, but, you know, that's what makes our community unique. That's what makes our school district unique. It's, it's, it's those little things that go on every day, and I just, I thank our folks. I just want to say thank you to them for what they do. I'm done with my part.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Now for board comments. Mr. Overcash?
Thank you, sir. Seems like it's been a very busy week, as superintendent mentioned. We did have another fun car line adventure out at Heritage last week. It's always fun to wake the parents and talk to the kids when they get out. Some of them are so little, they don't even seem like they should be in school, and half of them are half asleep when they get there. It's always fun to get to go to the different schools. And I believe the entire superintendent, entire board attended the Madison YMCA Veterans Prayer Breakfast last Friday, and also we all attended the State of the County address with Commissioner Matt McCutcheon, so. And we know we've got Thanksgiving coming up, so everybody will get a couple of days off and get to recharge and come back and do that final push to Christmas.
That's right.
It's right around the corner. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Overcash. Mr. Newberry?
Let's see. First, congrats to Ms. Thomas, well deserved. The, I would also like to thank, again, the finance department, I've already said thanks once, but for the, thank you for everything that you do. I'd also like to thank Dr. Ja and the policy committee for, for meeting, and we had, I think, an impromptu virtual meeting to make sure all of this stuff got through. So I appreciate that. I missed the Tootsie Roll 5K. I probably, speaking of the holidays coming up, I probably should have gone because I, but I'm, I'm not really a runner, probably should be, but I hate to have missed that. I heard it was a lot of fun. And, oh, and Thursday, last Thursday morning, I was at Midtown with Ms. Lesman and Dr. Nichols. Costco presented a grant, BJ's. Can we fix that in post?
We got that five second.
BJ's was there, I apologize. Giving a grant to our art and music teachers in the elementary schools for supplies. And I better stop talking.
Thank you, Ms. Newberry. If Michelle sees that, you're gonna be in trouble over Thanksgiving.
She's probably already texted.
Ms. Les?
I echo the thanks to, you know, Ms. Gray and Ms. Williams, thanks for the finance report and closing out the books. I'd also like to thank Ms. Denzies here from the city council, thanks for coming out and supporting. I know she reaches out to make sure she knows when the board meetings are and tries to make whatever activities she can, so thank you for your support. And I wanted, oh, I want to remind everybody to fill out your impact aid form, that we still have some time on that, and that's very important to our schools. So if you just go to Madison City Schools website and go under the parents area, and then I think it says something about military purple something, and you click on that, and then, and then you'll see impact aid form, so please fill that out before Thanksgiving, if you can. And then I also wanted to thank you too, Dr. Donaldson. My time here on the board, I've seen you involved in everything that, like Dr. Nichols said, and you play a major part on a lot, so you do a lot, and we appreciate it. So thank you so much, as do many of you, Mr. Terrell and Mr. Peck is at everything. So we appreciate you. I also wanted to give a shout out to Bob Jones and James Clemmons. They, the theater, they are both going to state, which is huge, and I think that's like December first, I'm not sure. So, you know, if you see them, congratulate them. I also, you know, thank you to BJ's, they gave us a fifteen thousand dollar grant to, well, I mean, that was huge, and that's to our arts and music programs, and if, if you don't realize, that is now all year long, and that also helps for our teachers to have some collaboration time, so. And we, there was one year that we got a bunch of emails from some kids that kept emailing us, can we have art all year long? Can we have music all year long? So I feel like, you know, we got that accomplished, so that's great. And then excellent Veterans Day ceremonies. It was so nice, you know, the, the things where you don't know what our students do or what happens at the schools. Liberty Middle School, the S2S actually goes out to Tut Van Nursing Home once a month and goes and hangs out with them and plays bingo and things, and I thought that was fantastic that they do that. Discovery had an excellent ceremony, appreciate everybody, and hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lesman. Congratulations, Ms. Thomas, well deserved, and I know, I know you'll be welcomed with opened arms at Columbia, and so, so I just, I know, I know we expect great things from you, and I know that you'll deliver. Congratulations. We have, I'd like to recognize Officer Sam Scott, he was in the doorway. He is serving with us tonight here and keeping us safe, and we just appreciate what Officer Scott does every day in our schools. And Officer Scott, I would recognize you for, for your service here tonight. We always appreciate you being here, and we mostly appreciate everything you do for our students every day in the classroom and in the, in the hallways, and, and how you're, you're a friend and a mentor and a safety figure, and we just appreciate your service. Thank you, sir. Our next scheduled meeting, as we said, next week is Thanksgiving, and so we won't have anything next week. Everybody will have a nice time off. We will have a finance committee meeting on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and that'll be followed at five PM here in the boardroom with a, our next school board meeting on December fifth. And that'll follow right after our ASB, we'll have our, the school board will, will have our winter conference that weekend preceding that to kind of wrap up the year. And if there's nothing further, board, I'll call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, any abstain? We're adjourned.